All right, this is the Court of Harford County's nine assessors. The Honorable Mayor Todd Paul presiding. Please take off all your hats and turn yourselves on us all, thank you.
Thank you very much, please remain standing, we'll have the prayer and the pledge. Commissioner Gatlin, would you please lead us in our prayer?
All right, remember by his, most gracious in heaven and father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to come together as a board and do what's in the best interest of our county and our constituents. We thank you for allowing us to come together and just be here, heaven and father. We ask that you give us the frame of mind to do what's in the best interest of the county. And we ask that you continue to bless us, these are no blessings, we ask in the name of God, the Son, and Jesus' name, for His sake we pray, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Mr. Swin, would you please, please?
The legends who will fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may you succeed. All right, Madam Kirk, if you do it, please proceed, so we'll have a little call.
Hey, Elton.
Here.
Bumper.
Here.
Lee Berry.
Here.
Gillem.
Here.
And then Gatlin.
Here.
Grant.
I'm here.
All right.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Kennamore.
Present.
Lake. Limer.
Here.
Miller.
Same.
Bickers.
Here.
Wayne.
Right.
Here.
All right, little house, if y'all would, some have been restricted, if you could put those mics down a little bit, so we'll pick up on it. All right, public forum, um, let's see, I just had this sheet, I think there's one person, just come in on public forum, you have three minutes. Okay, there's Mayor Kelly there. Mayor Kelly, you want to come over there?
Welcome to America.
Here we are again. Um, I come tonight to speak to y'all and clarify something that I said last night at the meeting. Possibly that was misunderstood or misunderstood, um, when I referenced that some of y'all went through the school system and you go, I was, that was not meant to be in any way, negative or derogatory whatsoever, I was trying to make a point. In comparison, that several of you all do work from the school system, you can go no matter from the school system comparatively, um, there was, at that point, my understanding of issue with me being on the 911 board and working for the sheriff. And to return, I would go in a 911 board, it's kind of the same concept, if y'all were voting on school board issues and y'all vote for school, that was the point I was trying to make. It's not in any way intended to be negative or derogatory or offensive to anyone, so I wanted to clarify that first and foremost. I do still have a concern over way of 911. Billing and charges are handed out to these towns, um, I'm still sticking up for town, I'm continuing to cut the tune. The Jets, the way that came about, when they voted, and I was at that meeting, Mayor Ryan, I was at that meeting as well, they agreed to vote a raise. Uh, we had no input, no heads up, no nothing that that was happening. Uh, I re emphasize my point on that again, and that it's real easy for me to say that I'm gonna pay a cost of raise, and I'm gonna spend Commissioner Kennamore's money, Miss, Commissioner Kennamore, you don't get say money, I'm just gonna spend your money and give it to him, you don't get no say so. That's what happened with that 911. It affects these towns, but also affects the county, because their vote must spend money for salaries, it's fifty-nine dollars. That's why I wanted to vote in a voice, and I felt like I should have a voice, and I actually weren't given anything, it was not, no choice, no option. The 911 meetings are very invasive, I think you as a commission should want forehand's parents in with the 911, what's going on. Mayor Ryan and myself, I didn't want to put in a ready, that was literally a whisper, we did not hear what was being said, what kind of public meetings that, seriously. So, um, those are just points to ponder for y'all, um, as I said before, you know, there's quite a few that have an issue with me being on that board. I opted to step back from that, I didn't understand the full realm, uh, what the problem was, I understood it was personal. And, um, I now understand the depths of that and what it was all about, and there was a lot of behind the doors whispering, that people weren't willing to come board. I promise you, I have documentation for anything you want to ask me, I'll be more than happy to answer, I'm an open book, but I still stand on that I decline to be a part of that, I'm not gonna beg to be of service. It was clear that, you know, I'm not worthy in your eyes, um, so that's that. That being said, I still feel like that town needs a voice, as do many of these other towns and counties that are, that have no say in this. What's to keep them from voting a fifteen percent raise next year? Nothing, not a thing. So, that, you know, with all that being said, um, I have spoke with Commissioner Wright, and asked if he would assume the representation for town on that 911 board, and I believe he's agreed to do that. Town of Poont is in his district, so, um, I've asked that he would assume that position and represent the town of Poont, and obviously, there's folks, it's not gonna let me do that. But, you know, folks in Black House, they're just some rocks, I'm just saying. I have a great appreciation for each and every one of y'all, what you do, and I have a taste of somewhat what you're faced with, and I know it's not an easy job. I appreciate those that we did, gave any consideration, and, you know, those that didn't, oh well, that's all, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we'll move into approval of minutes from last month. Would please?
So moved.
So, yes, most been made in second, any questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please sit down and say. Thank you, Commissioner, all right, we have no reach, if you have a chance to make it, would you?
So moved, great, thanks.
Most been made in second, any questions on that others? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify the saying, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like saying. Of course, it passes. All right, we move into reports, please, from our county officials, uh, seeing Mr. Swift. Swift, come forward, please, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've got several things here, first thing is the court report, Mark Popey. Uh, each one of you should have a copy of this, if you have any questions with it or concern, please feel free to ask me, if not, I'll just leave it on the floor. Popey, our court report, our Popey.
So is that, uh, question, how you been, hot mix, number jobs fourteen, uh, pretty low cost out there, but not cost a ton of money, hot mix, paid, is that fourteen jobs, I guess, I mean?
Fourteen miles, fourteen miles.
Fourteen miles, okay.
We just wrapped up E-Vine, uh, Lake Hardman, and the Powell Chapel from the city numbers to the crossroads, E-Vine from one point five to the crossroads, and Lake Hardman, same, two point four. That was all state money, that money we got from Butch, even when he did three hundred fifty-three inch region, we got three point four million, I think, we spent two point five on those projects.
That was a lot that was subbed out, like, was all that subbed out?
Yes, uh, standard construction, got, uh, the one on E-Vine, and Arrow Pay, we got the one on Powell Chapel and Lake Hardman. Yeah, but one of them was one point four million, I think, one project, the center got probably one point four, and Lake Hardman, Powell Chapel, it's like one point four.
I have a question, Mr. Grant, did you, uh, did you guys finish the job today with Kristaline and, uh, White on the, uh, highway too?
You come out, uh, or what are you talking about, the tunnels or?
Uh-huh, yeah.
Yeah, they went, uh, they went San Bern Bay.
Kristaline's dead.
White, yeah.
I mean, White, yeah, they finished that one up.
I'm sure of it, yeah.
Okay.
They were, we'll do them, I mean, there was some, there was separate tunnels on the, you know, I said one of their first, so.
I appreciate it.
Just maybe.
Thank you.
Look, y'all have any other questions, I see the motion for approval on the floor, Mark Popey. Yes.
You may not simply, like, on the road, is it?
Sure, well, we, we've got, yes, I've been out there, saw, we had Marlon, we're doing E-Vine today, they're starting E-Vine, they're kind of pulling shoulders out, and then we'll start that one. Definitely, we got on that today. Starting, it's just.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I seen, and I want to bring you, you called me, we took it down, but it's, it's still, we're not gonna check it out. Where was that, I'm not, for the Lake Hardman, well, there's some, well, we pulled shoulders, we're actually paying, we're gonna make a pull shoulders, that's kind of like how, of course, we did, I guess, to the.
Casey, I have a question.
Just may.
You said, um, you did, um, twelve jobs, safety signs, were those new signs, or just replacing signs?
Probably replacing signs, there's, we've been, there's a lot of signs installed right now, a lot of stop signs for some reason, and many signs always installed, so we're having to go back, right now, the big thing is stop signs, for some reason, people are stealing stop signs, that's right, so. And then you have some people taking down our bridge signs too, that are regulated by the state Tennessee, and they come by and check that on a regular basis, so. The bridge, many signs are taken down for whatever reasons, farming, law, or kids knocking down, I just don't know if we can make a replacement, all the time, come on.
Casey, can you write down, uh, Laney Road, and then public forum, there's that intersection, stop sign been laying on the ground for about two weeks, I've been trying to call you, but it's a good time to take.
Same, you too.
Thank you. The whole public, like.
Mr. Swift.
Yeah, sure, uh, do you have a total for the county, uh, on hot mix?
Total, what do you mean, total?
To- the total, uh?
Tons or miles or?
Miles, total miles.
For?
For?
That we, that we, the asphalt, the district?
Right, right.
You don't have, uh?
Okay, 'cause I'm, I'm just seeing the vibe.
Yeah, and, uh, we usually do it, like, the state, it's thirty-one seven, we've done Sasser Road, oh, we've done several roads this year, kind of, we've done, then with Farm Blue, finished it out, the second, second half of it with Farm Blue, I don't know what we've done as far as the county, so I hope that I do it.
Yeah, I just asked, I see by district, you know?
Yeah, yeah, we, our board is actually working on the district, what they want to add to this next, this is just, it's time to do the report, so we bring it up here, show you what we've got completed, and we're, we're working on it, so.
I'm making a motion that, uh, quarterly report, work proposal be approved.
Motion been made in second, in discussion or motion? All right, seeing none, we don't need a roll call, that's not the name, all right, all those that, except that, please signify the saying, aye?
Aye.
All right, if you'll stay with the court report, the work proposal, the last two pages, our board and I, we are requesting the budget minimum to purchase a gravel truck for tree and, uh, road debris. If you go second page and the last one, there's the actual picture of the truck, the key word truck, that Peterson, uh, lived on the frame. This is, or like, we're actually gonna use it with the giraffe, we just got the giraffe out, started, uh, about to move it, and this guy, we, we asked about two or three years ago about, uh, painting one of these, and they said they were so far behind, that they're trying to catch up, but this one, if we purchase this one now, it's running two hundred twenty-eight thousand. And it is ready to go January first, he said, so, if we can, uh, we're asking for a budget minimum to move the money out of our fund balance, we have, right now, approximately four point seven million in our fund balance, a little over, but, uh. We're, our board agreed, and we're trying to get this, we have ordered another Mack dump truck last year, and we have one coming in, and the second is gonna be ready in January as well. So, the last page is for a budget minimum, if you guys are prepared to move four hundred fifty thousand out of the fund balance into our highway equipment to purchase these two pieces of equipment, and in the description, it's available, and we're gonna have the truck. But I wanted you guys to see what kind of vehicle, most of y'all know what a gravel truck is, so, this is a gravel truck, that we can help with, um, cleanup on roads, a lot of the sheriff department causes about a dump site, this is a bit easy to go over, you grab it up, dumping off a distant load, several trucks, maybe you can pull truck outside, and sort it out, and hold another truck at the same time, so.
No, my board's a hundred percent behind this, we'd have to come and ask them for approval for the budget minimum.
So moved.
I couldn't understand, was that a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Motion been made to approve, second.
So, we're just moving in four hundred thousand. Yeah, so, I'm, I'm, yeah.
Uh, question now, how much, did you say this truck was again?
Four hundred twenty-eight thousand.
Four twenty?
The dump truck's around two hundred thousand, I don't know the exact amount, it's, uh, we added a tri-axle, or another axle, to, to the gravel truck, and it was a hundred ninety-eight thousand, just regular tandem dump truck, so, and we added axle on board prices.
You didn't pick twenty-eight, right?
Two twenty-eight, two, two twenty-eight, two, somewhere around there.
Yeah, I see.
Took the appropriate.
Yeah.
Peterson, this right here is two hundred twenty-eight thousand, the cannon one.
That was my question, yeah.
The other tandem dump truck, I do not know the exact price, it's around two hundred thousand.
Thank you, clear, brother.
That's what I ran, it's for four fifty-seven, understand?
All right, motion is, uh, to approve the four hundred fifty thousand, and it was motion, and it's second, no discussion, not looking at a roll call, and I believe, Madam Kirk.
Wright.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Bickers.
Yes.
Same.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Limer.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Kennamore.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Hensley.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Gillem.
Yes.
Gatlin.
Yes.
Lee Berry.
Yes.
Bumper.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, the only, the other thing I got, I'm just gonna, uh, notify you guys, we made a few changes to our personnel policy, I just turned it over to Chip, come in, so, Chip Carey's already updated and approved, he just had to sign it, give her a copy of it, and I'm gonna bring her a copy and sign it with Chip.
Thank you, way that it is, you just have to present it.
Yeah, I gotta present it to you.
And if you, Casey, the man, could you, could you explain just briefly, on, uh, I had some calls too, of, I'm thanking, uh, Popeyes, and, uh, for, um, Tomson, and for Muddy Ridge, I want to thank y'all for what you did. And then, on the, uh, guardrails, the state guardrails, people have asked me about that, and I said, that's floating under the restrictions of state, 'cause they have so much, um, right away, and they're sitting on, so, then county, uh, guardrails, how does that, how does it play out?
Well, the state, there's a safety check on all the roads every year, they'll do like, safety data, crash report, and everything, they call it information, and there's safety, before which we give a grant for that, it's like two hundred sixty-five thousand, every two years. We actually just, they just did one that involves part of Van Geren, Lake Hardman, and things on, or why the new guy's there, so you'll see some new stuff, and they're the ones that determine, like, if the, if the road was unsafe, we're like, guardrails, and then they'll request us to, we try to, so. Do, I think we did one on the same road, we had some bad crashes out there, we put a safety in there, but they'll tell us, I mean, we can put up guardrails anytime, but, I mean, that's a big cost, guardrails are a real big cost, to put up, and just even the cost of the guardrails, it was physical, but. The safe, we let T-Dot give us that safety grant, they do the assessment of the data, like, crash reports and stuff like that, if anybody's badly injured, blah, blah, and then they tell us, hey, you might need a guardrail.
They also do that with states.
Yes, and they change, the specifications on guardrail change about every six months, so, one month, I mean, you go in there one year, put it down, then they come in and change the asphalt status, needs to be raised up six inches, and then a principal change on the guardrails, and you're never gonna need it right within one year, so. We'll see, and now they're just kind of lax, and it was like, hey, that needs safety, and I understand it. There is one more thing I meant to talk, I know a lot of people have called me about Lake Hardman Road, Leon Fish was talking about, gonna change the road to his name, uh, some of the commissioners called me, and I. When you go about changing the name of a road, you have to look at all things considered, if you ever change, you want to be fair to everybody, at least on that road, whenever you change the name of a road, you have to also change, everybody on that road has to change their mail-in address, their credit cards, everything that comes through the mail to them, has to be changed. Social Security, uh, or Social Security, everything that, that involves the address, that's, driver license has to be changed, so, I done a little research on it, back when Miss Mary was at the 911 board, being her, tried to, we changed the road, and I think in, uh, Claude Court, they called us, we had to, but, before you change a road name, just remember, y'all have control over that too, by the way. Uh, if you ever change the name on a road, think about how much it affects everybody on the road, if it's just one or two houses, not really big deal, but if you, like, Lake Hardman, you have, I don't know how many houses you have, but everybody would have to change the mail-in address, any fields they got coming to them, anybody that sends that address on that, they have to go change, the state's agency, driver license, everything. So it's a big thing, if anybody ever wants to change or do a dedication of a section of road, now, that's easy to do, you have to go through a resolution here, and just name a section of road after somebody, so, that would be the easiest and simplest thing to do, so, I know Mr. Fish asked that bridge name, that come down off of Lake Hardman, probably get the covenant loop, or Calum Road. Uh, if you guys ever consider that, you would have to go for, you guys hot a phone, and make a resolution to name, like, two miles for so-and-so, and then you have to do a proclamation, so Johnny Shaw, I think he did, pushed it through state for, just a dedication, we do that all the time, instead of remanding the road, 'cause, there's a lot that goes into remanding the road, so. I just want y'all thinking about it, I had several calls on that.
So, Casey, with, like, what you're talking about, is, like, on eighteen, are they, um, playing part of the highway, you got to share, pigs?
Yes.
That's the same thing, yeah. For Johnny Shaw, and Charles, or?
Yes, it's the same, that's the same, that's a dedication, so. I don't know if that's what he was talking about, because I think he contacted Mr. Johnny Shaw, and he told him, say, if you look at the paperwork, the county commissioner, he will send it up to the state, he's signed it all, that's a dedication, now, when you change the name of a road, that's, you guys, that's up to you guys.
I think he was asking something about changing the, the road, yeah.
Yeah, well, that, and then it comes down to, you know, I mean, I'm, I like everybody, but you gotta be fair to, somebody that's lived there a hundred years, works with somebody, you know, you gotta weigh your options, that's, like I said, it's totally up to you guys, but, you know, you want to be.
Wait, I understood he was talking about.
Okay. Well, then, if you change the name, Joe Blow down here on the other, he wants to change his, that's, his name, but I don't know, but you got that, so, just take those into consideration when you think about changing names, I had a talk to Mr. Fish, but, you, you gotta look at all that stuff, 'cause, it's, it's a big deal, whether. I had to talk to Mr. Fish, but you, you gotta look at all that stuff, because it's, it's a big deal, whether, he knows it or not, so.
I think it was kind of just in a dedication.
Yeah, dedication's the best way to go.
But you really broke it down, now.
Yeah, dedication's the best way to go, if anybody ever wants something named off a bridge, or a mile of road, dedication's the best way to go. It's the easiest way, you don't have to lot of change.
You don't affect other.
That's right, you don't affect everybody, so you kinda, kinda fair people, everybody. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna move into, uh, lady who, uh, is driving, place where the sheriff's department is standing in, I'm gonna skip to me.
Lady, how are we now? Got a lot of, sure, do it. Volunteer to, um, this is the monthly arrest report, criminal reports, sheriff's office, we had a hundred and thirty arrests, fifty-eight reports on criminal incidents. Two drug offense arrests, fifteen thefts and murders, uh, six traffic offenses, eight assaults, three, six offenses, one vandalism, four harassment threats to plane, five fraud, three disturbances. And eleven others which be, kind of, claims legal government, anything like that. That's gonna be our arrests and criminal reports. Uh, dropped over on the letter, we had fourteen thousand four hundred pounds. Total for the year to date is fifty-three thousand six hundred pounds. For the month of November so far, we got twenty-two twenty pounds.
Any questions? Thank you, sir, appreciate you here, man. All right, let's move on to, uh, Commissioner, would you, uh, leave with our budget amendments, our budget chair, Commissioner.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening, Commissioner, uh, budget, we have about seven budget amendments, budget committee did not meet, most of these, uh, have to go through the full commission, uh, anyway. They're fairly self-explanatory, I'll start with number one. And, uh, if you have a question on one, just stop and proceed, uh, Mr. Chair and I, we can take all these together. Uh, number one, civil defense, uh, dividend fund balance, three thousand six hundred, credit in rentals, three thousand six hundred. That's to move monies into account for tower, the tower rental, and that is reimbursed by the state. Uh, number two, amlets, dividend fund balance, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, crediting repair or maintenance vehicles, one thousand, and refunds, uh, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Reason justification to move, uh, monies in the deed of the account. Number three, election commission, uh, dividend rentals, fourteen thousand, and crediting building improvements, fourteen thousand. Uh, that does look like line item transfer, that's to move remainder of rent monies in the building improvements to complete the election of office renovations. Uh, number four, public safety, dividend fund balance, four hundred fifty-six thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars. Crediting, uh, deputy line item, two hundred thirty-eight thousand two hundred seventy-nine dollars, uh, social security, fourteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. State retirement, twenty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, Medicare, three thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars, and other charges, uh, ten ninety-nine, a hundred seventy-two thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. And that's for the employees who have settled out of lawsuit with the county. Through, or either W two wages or ten ninety-nine wages. And if it was W two, the social security, Medicare, state retirement is conflicted there. Uh, number five, dividend fund balance, uh, landfill, four thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Crediting administrative officer, three thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars, social security, two twenty-seven, state retirement, four twenty-two, and Medicare, fifty-three, and reason. That's moving, uh, Stephen Gray to the minimum salary level for exempt employee, uh, effective one-one-twenty-five per federal guidelines. Uh, number six, general session judge, uh, line item transfer, dividend travel, fifty dollars, credit to dues, membership, fifty dollars. Uh, as you see on the right, the dues went up to three fifty versus three hundred. And finally, number seven, uh, emergency management. Dividend fund balance, nineteen thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents, crediting improvements, nineteen thousand four hundred and thirty-five ninety-eight. And that's to move, uh, monies received into, for the new tower at Salisbury that Mr. Taylor spoke to us about last meeting. Any questions on one through seven?
I have a question on number one. Where is the, where is the tower at the winter?
I'm not sure which tower that is, but that's reimbursed by the state, so it's just passed.
I don't understand, I just want to know where that tower is.
Do you know the way, Salisbury, Salisbury?
It's all over Salisbury.
It's Salisbury for that, and then the other is where the nine-one-one put the money in, and we just have to have a dividend credit for that nineteen. But this is the thirty-six hundred, it'll be moved, and, um, according to, um, emergency services, that we, um, uh, put that in, state's gonna reimburse it.
A question on the five, on Stephen Gray, so he was not at the federal level, the minimum level, or to be an exempt employee?
Yeah, that'll all change.
He was until they raised his.
Uh, another question, uh, on number four, that total there is for having, um, planes, what's that total number of planes, sir?
Nineteen, I believe, in a minute.
Just let everyone know that, thank you.
Any other question on place of business? Mayor, I said, will they approve?
Second. Motion been made in proper second. Any discussion on the motion, please? Any discussion? Saying none, we'll move into a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Dale?
Yes.
Buffer?
Yes.
Lee Barry?
Yes.
Gallin?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Granton?
Yes.
Hansley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kinnamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lemire?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
All right, motion passed, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. And I'm gonna say, as Budget Chair, maybe that's phenomenal, uh, we've been working that stuff out, unbelievable, thank you, sir. All right, we'll move into, uh, I need that, uh, everyone know about November twenty-third, real quick, for, um, two P M, at six fifteen, Moss Lane. We have, uh, first responder day. A young lady here in town, uh, Mr. Rita Smith, is, uh, is part of the Genesis, um, it is a chapter that, well, it's volunteers, they're going to feed the first responders, uh, and spouses. But they've been gathering the first responders from the sheriff's department, um, uh, from the fire department, from rescue squad, and, uh, that's gonna happen at two o'clock on November the twenty-third, so I want everyone to know about that. Judge Thompson sent over. For our recovery court. That's gonna be graduation for, uh, Harcon County Recovery Court, Thursday, November fourteenth, at five thirty P M, the First Methodist Church. Um, and is invited all commissioners and the public as well, so please come by, uh, several graduates for the Harcon County Recovery Court. All right, we have a tax sale, it's called a mayor's tax sale, that could be coming up, uh, a couple of days, uh, through govies.com, and please go online if you're interested in any properties, that's an inventory of the county. And they will be sold for the mayor's tax sale, we have a lot of interest in those, a lot of people have signed up already, so that could be November the fourteenth. All right, I did want to bring this up, last year we did a Christmas bonus, uh, for the employees, and, um, Mr. One Hundred Fifty, I believe it was fifty, or what, thirty, I didn't think it was. Had to, it's somewhere between, it's less than ten thousand, but it was for employees, you had to be there so long, um, for a year, I believe you have to do the social security, the Medicare and all that, so had to do around fifty-four. We want to bring that up for discussion, see about that for this year as well. Yeah, we need to go ahead and finalize that really tonight, because we, we don't have a lead, um, fully scheduled for December, so we'll need to go ahead and say, approve it, and it's the same as we did last year, we glad to do that. And there is money in the account.
So, how do we do that? Do we go back here as a service, or?
No, it was just straight across the board.
Straight.
We did that, Mr. Commissioner, last year. Yeah. Yeah.
I make the motion that we, uh, give our county employees, uh, Christmas bonus, December, um, twenty twenty-four, in the same amount that, uh, we relied on the last year in twenty-three.
Motion been made in second.
Excuse me, I have a question. For?
One year.
One year, you both.
Same as going last year, those are the qualifications to the first.
Can I agree, I'm gonna work at least one year?
And I do believe elected officials work, see?
That's right, we, uh, elected officials that, that does not pretend to be elected officials. To make that clear. Second, uh, thank you. Motion's been made in second, because by Commissioner, yeah, Mr. Lido, I have to turn it over, Jim, I relate, that's fifty, yeah.
Before the, after the, so, they come up like seventy-five, eighty dollars per person, where they got fifty dollars.
Right.
Yeah. Same thing to the last year. So, we got a motion made in second, any discussion on? If none, let's move into roll call vote, if you agree.
Wright?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Lemire?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Kinnamore?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Hansley?
Yes.
Granton?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Gallin?
Yes.
Lee Barry?
Yes, sir.
Buffer?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
All right, thank you, motion passed. And I do see Ms. Morris came in, and I'm glad to see you, Ms. Morris. And, uh, did, did you have an update for the election, or want to fill us in about the numbers that we got?
Well, we'll start, uh, Monday at five thirty, and, uh, we, about, about nine-five-hundred people, so, as a total.
About ninety-five hundred?
Should've been a lot more, but it was nine-five-hundred.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
All right, next, let me move into the nine-one-one, um, board departments. Mayor Paulson?
On that, uh, Commissioner Hensley asked about, uh, since he and Commissioner Wright have been appointed, if they had to recuse themselves, they only have to, uh, provide a notice to the commission. If there's, if it's a personal interest in the confidence policy, the structure defines that as, uh, if there's a financial interest essentially in, uh, they have to be on the, uh, board, so, I don't think they will.
Yeah, there's no, no compensation on that one.
Then you're fine.
And you see that we made a correction, as, as Mayor Kelly had, uh, referred to, uh, earlier, and she had talked to Commissioner Wright, and, uh, I have talked to Commissioner Wright for that district, and I have full confidence in him. And for his ability to, um, to sit on the board. I also talked to the state, and Mr. Blough, uh, the lawyer for the, uh, for the state of the nine-one-one. Uh, we talked about the board, we talked about different things, and at one time it was said that you could not possibly have an advisory board. But if there's an advisory board that it's non-voting, you can, the county can pick, some people, let's say, may be represented from the banking industry, or whatever, because that's not actually in the statute. So, you can pick that, if they need advice from that or the rescue squad. So, I'm gonna form one with a few members, uh, at a later date, but these are the voting members for this board. And, uh, we have same as the laws on the last, uh, couple of months ago, but it is substitution, um, for Commissioner Wright for, um, Mayor Kelly. And is there any questions on these members? Because we are under a ninety-day rule by state statute, as, uh, and Mr. Grant, we've talked about before as well. Mr. Chair, do we need to bring that from the table? No, this would be a new, since this is a substitution, and that old one by Robert's rules is dead, so this can be brought forward as new, and it will be the only substitution. This will go into record of what these are now. Yeah. Commissioner Wright, would you like to say anything about it?
It's not relevant.
Yeah, okay. But I'm not sure about it, but just, I feel like it's my responsibility, since I was asked to fill it, fill in, so, uh, I'll do my best.
Well, thank you for stepping up, sir. All right, is there any, any questions on these, and if there's none, I would accept the motion in to approve. Each one? I'm gonna make some more here for approval. Okay, we have a motion, if you're certain. Commissioner Williams, you have a second? All right, is there any discussion?
Well, I told you the discussion before we made the motion, but it's okay.
All right, we will then, we will, all votes will accept these nominations, if you would please signify the saying out.
Aye.
All votes by the likes of, like, that. Thank you very much. All right, and now we'll move in at this time to our lawsuit update, uh, our county attorney, Mr. Conner, if you would please, sir? Have the floor.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Um, we have, uh, thirteen additional summonings to, uh, put the commission vote on, people who, uh, can accept the, uh, the summon that we adopted at fifty percent. We have Jason McCord, twenty-eight thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Jeff Hill, thirty-nine thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Frank Smith, nineteen thousand four hundred forty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Brendan Allen, twenty-two thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars, making two cents. Wesley Estes, four thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-two cents. Ryan Bannenberg, forty-nine thousand two hundred forty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. Chad Wooden, um, five thousand four hundred eighty dollars and four cents. James Ryan, twelve thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. Judy Wiggins, fifty thousand, uh, fifty thousand two hundred thirty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Ethan Vasquez, eleven thousand two hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Tommy Woods, eight thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. And Christopher Hannis, five hundred ten dollars and eighty-eight cents. And so, like, I guess we need a motion to approve, any questions, I can answer for you about that.
I've got one question. When we did this process of fifty percent, did we say we had to vote on it every time, I thought we just approved of the fifty percent one time?
That, that's right, but I'm, I'm, I'm just asking if you vote on it, just so everybody's clear, if you're voting on it, you approve it in case you guys have any questions about it.
Okay.
Sort of, sort of building suspense.
Okay.
I make a motion for approval. All right, we have a motion been made, again, a second. All right, any discussion on this motion, please? Saying none, Madam Clerk, let's move into roll call, please.
Dale?
Yes.
Buffer?
Yes.
Lee Barry?
Yes.
Gallin?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Granton?
Yes.
Hansley?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
And the trial for the, uh, efforts that remain, it's, uh, fifteen to sixteen, it's, uh, set start Monday, this Monday, November eighteenth, and, uh, expected last seven days, could go a little bit longer than that, but we all will sleep, and then Monday, Tuesday, Thanksgiving.
What time's the trial start on Monday? Is it eight? Eight A M.?
Nine.
It's nine A.
Nine thirty. Nine thirty, I'm sorry. And today, when, uh, Mr. Dean and I were in court for the pre-trial conference, Mr. Sessions, uh, made an offer to settle everything that's remaining for one million nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. This amount is in addition to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of pretty too for the dispatchers, and this settlement amount also settles the leave bank claims to those remaining plaintiffs who no longer work for the county. The accrued leave balances of the remaining plaintiffs who still work for the county will be adjusted, dissolved, restored within six months of the quarter, proven in order based on their counsel. And of course, the people who terminated, uh, their representation to Mr. Sessions is not part of the settlement, and Mr. Sessions will file a motion for fees and expenses for all plaintiffs they represented in this lawsuit, and he'll also include the folks who have, um, ended his representation for the work he's done up to the point that they, um, ended the representation of him.
How many plaintiffs does that represent that's left after this? And would you say, Rob?
Uh, there are fifty-five left.
Fifty-five left.
And I know that, um, there are personal feelings in this matter, and, uh, I understand them, and, uh, I, I agree with them, but I think that this, I recommend this settlement because the attorney's fees that Mr. Sessions has yet will continue to mount, and I think this settlement, well, this settlement, I know cuts that off, and I think the, the amount that's saved will be addressed in the state of the county, uh, rather than going forward ahead, because he, Mr. Sessions is going, the plaintiff's is undercover some, and when they recover, they're entitled to a determined stays. I don't make the rules, I just explain. So, uh, I, Rob and I have looked, did some thought about it, and we, we recognize that the commission approved this settlement, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Dale, I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Vickers, you recognize, sir?
I would like to offer a counter of one point five.
Offer has been made. Motion. Motion, motion has been made, I'm sorry, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Second's been promptly made, and a second. Is there any discussion, please?
Is that amount, go on, then, put his, then it's off.
Yeah.
The four hundred and fifty-six thousand we approved, that was on the, um, what was that, nine-eight-hundred?
That's right, nineteen, seventy.
Right, so the one point five will be three times, that one should get rid of fifty-five, correct?
That's right, and they should have determined stays, stop the term station, approve, that's the, that's the big issue, is stopping the term stand.
Is there any more discussion? Motion's been made, permitted by, in the second, by Commissioner Sane. Saying no discussion, Madam Turk, let's move into roll call.
Wright?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Blake?
No.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Jenkins?
No.
Hensley?
Yes.
Granton?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Dever?
Yes.
Buffer?
No.
Dale?
Yes.
One second. Motion passes.
I have something.
Is there anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay, if there is, if there's some action, we do not have a, uh, a meeting scheduled for December, but we may have to at some point, if we call a special meeting, and, um, but if there's nothing else to do, just come before the commission invites them to business, I will entertain, what can I do, sir? Yes, sir.
Commissioner? Oh, I've been having some, uh, inquiries about the, uh, program.
Yes, sir.
Uh, does the county, the program is what we're getting at, does the county have to get permission from the program to use the program?
Yes, we have to, to ask permission to use that, we called, it says in that lease, uh, that was a lease that was presented, um, the month before I came into office, and it does say that it will be available upon request, we do have to ask permission to have it.
Okay, so, uh, how much of the funds does the county receive off of the program?
To my understanding, it's, it's not, or maybe it goes out for the fire, for the different offenses they have, except for, I believe, Ms. Moore, just, Commissioner Wright, are you on it?
I got to drop.
Okay. Ms. Moore?
What was, what was the, what is the one's name?
Those funds, there's nothing goes into the county general fund, second rate, Mr. Commissioner.
That's correct.
Yeah, I, I would like to, today we visited, to, personally, you.
Yeah, I think we visited, okay. Where does the funds go?
Well, they're set in a nonprofit account, where they're setting it, to put off, to host events and stuff out there.
Can we visit this?
But I think what Commissioner Buffer is saying, that, that's a public, um, site, and, you know, you know, we are not receiving any of those funds coming back into the county funds. I didn't make the rules. I, 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 I could, you want questions, you want, but I'm, I'm, I was not about to say, I'll just, uh, enlighten on what, uh, Commissioner Moore.
Does the county, does the county have any expense for?
Yes, I think they did, they're trying to pay the, well, they pay like the U T extension, electric, electrical and stuff like that. Now, we're kind of like, the funds we raised, we're fixing to have to put a new roof on the building, so they're coming out of profits, that, I mean, the money that we are raising, that, there'll be a new roof put on that building, so anything, the upkeeps of the grounds and stuff, the funds that we have raised, it goes towards maintaining it. And like I said, we've got a roof, Lee, like I said right now, and that, um, so we've gotten, getting estimates for bids, um, for, uh, new roof.
Okay, so something like that roof, then that's gonna come out of their funds, not yet?
Yes, it won't come out of the county stuff, we, we've raised the funds, because that's part of the deal, we have to maintain stuff like that.
Well, that's free business, and then we looked at both sides, on, on, jump in, go good on one side, but, yeah, if fireworks are out there putting a new roof on, you talk about thousands of dollars.
The county's not gonna do it, so that's got to come in there somewhere, I mean, that.
Okay, so who, who does the crying? Who, who?
I don't know.
Who makes the crying?
We do. We do. County, county.
The county does.
So the county has that building, but we don't have any funds.
All right, anything else?
On a lighter note, I'm thinking something good. Baltimore City Football made it to the playoffs last Friday night for the first time since two thousand seventeen, they also had their first playoff win since two thousand seven, so there's good things happening in the county. Um, they're, they're playing round two this Friday night, so, uh, just wanted to mention that, give a little shout out, also Middleton, uh, went to the playoffs as well last week, so bigger accomplishments for both, uh, programs, and we all be proud of that, there's a few good things happening, right? Thank you.
And before we jump real quick, there's, um, Thanksgiving, of course, coming up, and, uh, it's a great time to celebrate, but remember the people, just remember, I know everybody has time to, to celebrate it, so remember those people. And, did you have any comments, Mr.?
I do, I wanted to, uh, make sure I understand, yes, uh, sorry, I declared a call, but the, the motion for the one point five, uh, that just changes the amount in this offer, right? Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
So, so, so we still go, give, except or don't accept, we still go to court Monday?
Uh, if except or don't.
If except or don't.
If we don't, that's part of the whole matter, but if you don't, we go court Monday.
Yeah, correct.
All right. I'm gonna be adjourned.